If they vote, if they go for it, yes, they want to support.
As far as use?
Are you saying as far as use?
Use, well, they show up because I'm not seeing the town and the whole show up to meetings.
This is not open to y'all to the public yet. This is the table here discussing, okay?
What's wrong building it right back there? I think we ought to look into it.
Well, this is, this is, it's going to be made tonight or we lose it.
I make a motion that we look into building a community center. We have to buy it, try to buy a piece of land somewhere.
We have to make the motion to do it or not do it tonight.
You don't have to pick the location tonight, you just have to choose whether you keep it.
How do you know how much money is going to be left over?
He told us that.
He told us, he told us about 900,000 would be left over.
And I think we should use it.
I think we should build a community center. So I'll make the motion that we build a community center and let him work out the details on the locations and follow through with it.
Okay, there's a motion to build a community center. Is there a second?
I'm making a motion, but I'll say it.
Okay, perfect. All in favor?
Who made the motion?
I opened with the motion to build a community center.
They both did.
And then I asked a question. So, all right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right, motion carries for the community center. Okay, new business?
One thing I'd like to add while we're in the carpet area is we want to put a window with this opening right here, open this up, make a window so the office is not like a dungeon. You can see where someone's coming in out this door.
It's a good idea.
So nowadays, we've got people in town threatening other people's lives.
It seems like a safety hazard that the person can't see the door.
It needs to be, and this door needs to be addressed one day too as well. But this definitely is a window so she can see what's coming in out that door. It's not, it's not a high dollar project. It doesn't even require bids under 500 bucks, the window will cost. And I'm sure we get an authority to install it.
For sure.
Which one was the Dutch door?
Well, right here, we want this visual right here. So you can see, from anywhere in the office, you can see this door. It's not for a service window, it's just so you guys view of the door.
Somebody sneak up on our window for a second?
One way does that.
There has been different individuals who were coming in here being...
Yeah, very suspicious. It wasn't, it was just, it was just an information that this is something that we want to do. Anyone opposes it, welcome, just stay silent.
Okay. Did you vote on that?
It was, yeah, it's just an information.
Okay, so that's what's going on with that. In the new business, we have adding Belinda to the bank accounts. Since she's the clerk, it's in our ordinances, she needs to be a signer. So she needs to be added to the Capital City Bank accounts as well as the Seacoast accounts. Does that just have to be in the minutes?
Yeah, just like when you took office and we all wrote it and the same thing.
How much is that owed you?
No, whatever.
Because it's in the ordinances.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to let you know, she'll be added to those bank accounts. Let's see. Also, now, if we're going to have Megan, we need to change our day of the meetings. Do we want to go to the third Tuesday?
Third Tuesday of the month instead of the second.
So do I hear a motion to change our meeting date to the third Tuesday of the month instead of the second?
I make the motion, I'll be changing to the third Tuesday.
A second, starting next month.
Okay, starting in December?
Back to back.
All right, I have a motion to change the meeting date. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries, we're changing the date of our meeting. Okay. Do you have any reports for the administration, Belinda? Maybe like the website status?
We should be live by the end of the month. We will, at this point, we're working with Softline, who is our software people for our water program to tie it in so that when you go, we're going to be able to offer you to pay your line, your water online.
Perfect.
So that way, we've got to coordinate with the bank and various people to make sure that everything goes smoothly when you make the payment.
Announcements can go on there.
Yes.
So that'll be great.
We can, we can actually post the amendments to the agenda so you can go on and it'll be, we are also going to try to put on there the ordinances, resolutions, and the minutes, at least for two years. So you guys can go on and click on a history, choose your year, choose your months, and you'll be able to print and look at the minutes.
Now, that one will take a little bit more time, so don't expect it to be right out the door with that because it's a little complicated.
So we are fine tuning everything, trying to make sure it all, everything, it's a smooth flow and catch any hiccups now before you guys get, go live with it.
What is the address?
Do I mean?
What is the address, web address?
The website address.
Townofottercreep.org. And right now, it's, it's up there, but it just basically, if you try to click on anything, it'll say it's under construction.
As soon as, as I, we get everything organized and finished, we're going to do a mass mailing to let you guys know, okay, here, these are the steps that you'll need to take if you would like to set up your family. And so you'll go here, you'll do this, so you guys will have, we'll be able to walk you through anything, and then if you have a problem, you call us and we can also help you on the phone. So there again, we want it to be easy for you guys to go in and navigate for whatever department you're looking for. You know, we'll also, we're going to have the building permit, department tax to it, maybe new applications for water, the applications will be on there as well. If you can think of anything else, we're going to have an event calendar that will post certain things, our meetings, when the children's table comes, if there's anything special you guys would like, if there's anything else we would like to add to the website, you'll just put a comment in the box and then, so that I can get them, and we can address those as well. But yeah, as soon as everything is finalized, we'll do a mass mailing to let you know so you guys will be prepared for it.
It's great to see Otter Creek move from the 21st century.
Thank you.
And also about the funds, we had an update for the status of our funds.
Yes, we have, AT&amp;T wanted to, we are on the old copper lines and we had a choice. We could actually renew with them for three years and keep it at the same price that we're doing now, which is at $289. We got on to the Florida government program, which is, we were able to go with T-Mobile at 5G. We were able to take our landline and put it on cell phones, so it is actually portable. That, the two phones and the internet is less than $100 a month.
Wow.
The, the, the internet is month to month, there is no contract for that, and there's a standard two years for the cell phone, which is still the same, but it's still cheaper than it is with AT&amp;T. We have a, we're now using Outlook as our email, we have a new email address. AT&amp;T is there again, wants everything to go to their fiber optic. For the internet, the fiber optic, they wanted us to sign a three-year contract, and they explained to them that we're going to get our own for our grant next year, and it would be silly for us to have them as a contract the three years, and ours is coming in before them, and we are, the grant is in our name, and we are one of the sponsors of it, therefore it would seem sort of silly to sign a three-year contract at their rate and have ours too. So we did some checking, and with the government program, the rates are really good, and everything is still, you've got the same warranties and guarantees as, as we did before. The only difference is AT&amp;T is not the monopoly of our items now as it works.
Some good savings.
Yes.
And I'm sure the internet works a little better?
Oh yeah, the internet is just awesome. It's just awesome. You don't, you don't sit and have, play the Jeopardy song in your mind as, watch a little bandwidth and upload or download. It is, we do have a password for any guests that would like to come in, and we do have it for the profit sector as well to come in and use the internet. I'm going to post it, I have a bulletin board that's coming so that those little things we can post, so you're more than welcome to use it. I'm not sure the range yet, how far outside of the building it covers, but that's something we can test, but if you need to come in and sit down, you're more than welcome to use, I'll give you the password.
Is the wifi up and running now?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, very, it's, it's very nice, very nice.
Fast?
Very fast. Very fast, where all the state forms that we were behind on, we got caught up with, and we are current with even the current forms, it was just, just like that, there it is, and it's, they're very quick.
That's good, that'll double up.
You said T-Mobile, right?
Yeah, T-Mobile, yeah, for the given there.
T-Mobile is the fastest provider in this area.
If you're a customer, you can get it for $30 a month. If you're not a customer, I think it's 57.
And it's a remote box, it's just a small cube, and you can take it with you, you can go anywhere with it.
It works fantastic.
So probably have...
I got antenna on that tower over there.
It's on your tower, right?
You mean, you mean on that tower on my property?
Soon to be your tower?
You mean soon to be my tower?
That'd be the one.
I'm going to touch on, we went to election training at the supervisor of elections, and Tammy wanted us to make an announcement. I touched on it a little bit at the last meeting with the difference with the financial reporting, that people on the board currently, as well as new people running, will have to fill out a different form. So anyone who stays on the board after December 31st of this year will file a Form 6 electronically, where in the past, it was a Form 1 on the paper, which was a very vague form. It's a little bit more detailed, so she wants everyone to know ahead of time, if you're going to be running to be a qualified candidate, you will have to get that uploaded way ahead of the filing because you will need to bring the clerk a receipt showing that you have already done that to be able to meet the qualifying deadlines. So you've got to start working on that ahead of time. It will go into effect the first of January, you can actually go online and do it on the Florida Commission on Ethics website, there will be boxes you can click if you're going to be running again, that you have to fill it out. If you're not running again and you're a current board member, you still will need to file a new Form 6. And the new Form 6 is more detailed in the aspect that you will be reporting all your bank accounts, all your mortgages, any debts you have, if your children have college funds, any of your retirement funds, like they want to know everything. And it will be uploaded on the internet, it will be public for anybody to see, this country, Russia, China, whoever. She just wanted everybody to know that, that it's more detailed, that you'll need to get on that sooner. So don't wait till the last minute and walk in the last day of qualifying if you're going to run and think that you can just sign up.
So the elections office, as I understand it, is handing that responsibility off, and now you'll be signed on with the Ethics Commission as a board member, so that's a huge change.
Yeah, they're taking it away from the local, the local...
Yeah.
Which is, it is a huge change. There's no more paper forms, they're stepping into new times, so it's going to be pretty interesting. So just a heads up on that, so people can prepare for that now and not wait till the last minute. I just wanted to mention that. Does anybody else have anything about the other departments?
Well, before we leave administration, hard drives that were removed from the equipment we had before, are they stored here?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a protocol to access those?
As far as reinstalling them in a computer?
Well, say, I wanted some information off of them, I would, you have a system to retrieve it or...
We had, we had Charlie come in and extract all of those, he extracted it and saved it onto an external hard drive, so it can be accessed from you.
Why don't we extract it? I don't understand it.
Because, remember, you were asking about those audio files that were missing, for example?
Yes, yes.
So you're in there looking for those audio files, and so you extract it because you're taking that computer out of service. So now it's accessible for me to use if it's on that hard drive or anybody to use, whereas if it's sitting in a plastic bag for storage, you can't look at it.
So it's in two places, it's on the hard drives and whatever he downloaded it to, is what you're saying?
It's on the external hard drive that it was downloaded to, and it's still on the hard drive kept in a...
The original hard drive.
Yeah, yeah, nothing was erased, they're all still in there.
But yes, you have access to the external piece.
So there's, there's a way to access that information?
No, we haven't looked at anything that was downloaded, we just, we just downloaded...
Those audio files were not on it because it was on a corrupt computer, there was one of the hard drives that was, nothing was retrievable from, and it's still in the office in a plastic bag or whatever.
You say you haven't looked at it, so we don't know that it's really there or...
Or if any of the data was retrieved. We don't know, we, Charlie backed it up, and then, of course, there's other things that took priority to look and see what was on there, so...
So what is on it, we don't know?
Did Gator Works do it or was it...
No, it was...
Like friend and family?
Charlie Watson volunteered to take it off for us, yeah.
His license to do it.
Yeah.
Seems like it should have been done by professional outfit.
He is.
His license to do it.
Pardon?
He's licensed to do it.
He works for the government, IT.
Yeah.
He had an official responsibility to us.
Well, neither does Gator, Gator Works or anybody else who did that.
Well, I think he was...
We're only paying for their services to...
Because he volunteered, there's an issue?
It's all, it's all there, nothing's been erased, it's all preserved, just so everyone can be at rest about that. Was there any other department reports?
Yes, on the, on the water, are those filters up and running?
They are not up and running.
November, they should be supposed to be.
Well, we had, we were working with DEP on getting permits in process, all right? Steady working, then working with them, and then we, prior to this, we had to go back and get the permit for the go-around that was did a year ago, because we didn't have the permit for the filters that were put in place a year ago. We had to go back and get all that fixed and get that permitted. So, you know, we've done all that, and was sitting on the back burner waiting on the response from DEP. We're working with them every day on getting our permit for the new filters, and all of a sudden, they call us, hey, you got your permit for the filters, and they send us to us, a permit for our filters. Okay, all right, we got excited, we thought that was for the filters that we're working with them on, but it's actually for the filters that Russell installed a year ago. So we were just getting called up on what was not done a year ago. So DEP is still working on that permit, and we're in communications, but we were waiting for a go.
By Christmas, probably?
As soon as DEP says go, we will knock it out.
Okay.
That would be good.
Thanks for the update.
That's what we're on here for. That was next coming up.
Oh, you were just going to jump on the gun.
No problem.
Status for the building inspector?
We have gotten a couple inspectors that's inquired about the position, I hear that there's another one that's inquiring, I haven't seen the paperwork on it. Do, we know who that is? Okay.
Wasn't that one a no-go?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one was a no-go.
Okay. So then we have two, I think it was two, we got Safebuilt and we have...
Safebuilt and...
Is Safebuilt still in the running? Joe?
They are still on the table, yes.
So is the Joe?
Joe, Joe's the guy that is coming in, taking over Cedar Key right now. He's been doing that, he's worked in Levy County, and actually working with other towns, and they're giving us good, good feedback that he's much more workable with the people and the town and versus Safebuilt.
Plus, he's all on card, right, where you only pay him when you're using him, where Safebuilt, you're paying them, which are a lot of money.
Right.
Yeah, but Safebuilt does more than what this guy is going to do. They do residential, they do zoning, land development regulations, planning, they do the whole thing. I make a motion that we go ahead and hire Safebuilt.
Bronson has Safebuilt, in their meeting, they weren't happy with them because they were too extensive.
I thought Bronson, just we could go, they said they're well satisfied with Safebuilt.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's in the public meeting, they were not...
Do you need to visit Brandon, who I'm asking?
I spoke to that guy just now.
Well, he's not the one you want to talk to.
This is, this is a budget issue going on, but Safebuilt puts us into a budget issue.
We can amend the budget if we have to. I made a motion, $25.
The town doesn't have the funds.
I got a motion on the table.
The town doesn't have, the town doesn't have the funds to support it.
You have got to set the price of the permits...
That's correct.
And give back fees to cover whatever it costs.
That's correct.
So what person builds, you charge them $25,000?
The additional built services that they're going to provide at this time is going to have to be paid for by the town, and there's, and there's this monthly fees, the town doesn't have enough permits to support those monthly fees, and...
They don't have a monthly fee, they charge by the hour for whatever they do.
They do on the permitting part, but the other stuff...
Every bit of it is by the hour, so you know, I'm looking at it, one, two, three, four, five, six of them, seven of them, by the hour.
Right, but he did have a minimum hours.
Yeah, we have, they have to pay him.
A minimum of one hour.
That's not what he stated.
That's not what he said.
And some of them is a minimum of two hours, but it probably takes them two hours.
And you've got to take his information with a grain of salt because...
I made a motion...
Mayor, pardon us.
I made a motion, not a mayor...
He's part of the good old voices to me.
Okay, there's a motion.
Did we hire them?
Could anybody want a second, hiring Safebuilt?
Well, I talked to somebody down south, and I talked to a man in chief when there was a building inspector, the chief, and he was a building inspector friend of mine, and I think that's the one we should go with.
Safebuilt?
Yes.
Oh, right, and bankrupt the town.
Yep.
That's what's going to happen. You got a community center, you got 25 grand, you got a lot of...
Okay, so the motion to hire Safebuilt, is there a second?
Aye.
All right, there's a second to hire Safebuilt.
My seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
My seconded, so yeah, aye.
Opposed? What were you done?
I was for it.
Your party, all right? Motion carries.
Time to learn, man. Come on, come on, come on.
In announcements, we have the children's group table that comes every other Friday at 1:00. They came the 8th, the next time they're coming is the 22nd, and always remember, you can sign up to get your water bill emailed, it's faster, and it saves the town money, which might be a good idea right now.
Too late.
And then the Waukesha Water and Wastewater meeting will be tomorrow at 1:00. It will be in the Nature Coast Biological Station in Cedar Key, their address is 552 First Street. Does anybody else have any other announcements, Belinda, was there anything else? All right, moving on to public comments. Members of the public have three minutes to comment on any items or issues discussed at this meeting. Did anybody have a public comment?
Just want to say that I think there have been some mistakes made tonight on some poor judgment decisions that have no business minds to make the proper calls on some big money that the town can't pay for. You're not going to be able to maintain, and this is just my projection, I guess we'll find out next year how bankrupt we are, but...
You want to unincorporate? You might have?
I'm not against unincorporating.
Might be in favor.
I'm not against.
If you go bankrupt, you can't unincorporate.
You can't unincorporate.
If the town is negative, you can't unincorporate.
Okay, well, just go bankrupt.
So you screw yourself twice.
Then the state, the state just come in and shut it down.
But anything is my public comment.
His comment's gone.
So you got the community center, that once it's built, you have to pay for its operating expenses, that's maintenance, staffing, so on, so on, that's more bills.
More expensive for you.
More expense.
Yeah.
Now you've got a $25,000 obligation to this outfit, Bronson, public, publicly, we were in that meeting, but they, most of the board members were not happy with their cost and services, only one member of that board was happy with it.
Correct.
So I would question that, who that is and why. There's a lot of expenses here, have we even talked about local code enforcement, dog catcher expenses, because that's what an incorporated town should be providing.
Correct.
If you unincorporate, the county assumes those responsibilities. So think about that.
If it was not in, if it's not in our ordinance, we do not have to provide it.
But you should be providing it.
But, Belinda, he is addressing the council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So these are things, I think there are some decisions that are going to come back and bite you, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Puller?
I want the council to maybe reconsider the date that they, that they decided for council meetings, because at least consider in the future that those that the month, the Tuesday that was chosen was chosen for a reason because it avoided all other council meeting dates. And so, not tonight, but look at what might be done so that you do avoid other town councils or city councils in Levy County. It's just something, it's just a suggestion that I'd like to, I'd like to make because potentially a Thursday, but all, all cities in general meet on Tuesday nights, and they have chosen different Tuesday nights to meet, and when Otter Creek changes it, it's meeting night. All of the others, well, it will impact at least one other city by changing to that particular, I realize it was a unanimous decision, but...
It's because he can't.
But maybe you all need to think about it.
Is that when Williston's meeting is?
It is.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Was there anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Puller. Ellie, did you have your hand up?
What was the thing with ordinance 25, the yard sale?
That was not done because, would you find out regarding that yard sale ordinance?
Okay, after considered extensive resource, that the yard sale permit is no longer a valid issue. The ordinance was dropped off in 1996 when we codified, and it was also again dropped in 2009 when we decided to know we, City of Otter Creek does not have a licensed division. Everything was changed, and so therefore, we have no, we have no ordinance that now covers any yard sale.
Did anybody else have any questions? All right, anybody else there have anything? All right, I just want to wish everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, hope you enjoy the time with your family and friends, and just stay safe and be good to each other.
Come to the Christmas party.
And come to the Christmas party. Make a jern, thank you all for coming. Make adjourn. Thank you all for coming.